Okay, good evening. Welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, December 9, 2024. Clerk, please call the role.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Tally, and Counselor Norris are present.
Okay, thank you. Under New Business, I'm going to call Bill Suttermeyer first, because Bill has a meeting he has to attend, so I want to go ahead and get him taken care of. So, Bill, come on up. This is Public Works, so it's road salt for the Highway Department. Okay, Bill, go ahead.
We are looking to see if we can get $58,000 for funding for the salt that we need for the season. And right now, contractually, what we're obligated to have per contract is 400 tons, and we'll have 200 delivered upon payment, then they keep 200 as a float. And then, anything else that we have, as far as with this fund amount, it gives us extra if we have a heavy winter.
Okay, so I'll open the floor for discussion. There's any, if there are any questions. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Is the $58,000 what was in your budget for this year for salt?
Yes, we actually had 61.
Nice. And you, I know that we had a late winter last year. You don't expect there to be any issue with this amount of salt for us for this?
No, that's why with that, when it comes to it, it gives us also a safety net as well. We have, right now, stockpiled between 700 and 800 tons. With that 400, we're obligated for, that 200 should give us enough as far as storage on that, and then we also have it as a float. And then, the extra funds that we need is just kind of like a parachute safety net, just in case.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of, where are we? December 16, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Extension motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, it's Groton Utilities Lead Service Lines Initiative. Who's going to lead this? Kelsey, is that going to be you? Okay, let's bring up whatever chairs we need.
Is it okay if I use this chair?
Yeah, please, go ahead. And this is, excuse me, this is informing.
Yeah, we just need Dani to pull up the presentation when she has a second, Mayor.
Second?
Dani has our presentation.
Okay.
So... She's supposed to be pulling that up.
Yep, she's going to get the microphones, and then we'll do the presentation.
Perfect.
Yep, her good.
While we get that pulled up, I can do quick introductions. I know we're probably all new faces to the group. My name's Kelsey Odell. I work for Groton Utilities in the Projects and Planning Department as a project manager. With me today, I have Cesar Asuba, who is a Water Project Manager in our water group, as well as Amy Anderson George. She's with Arcadis, our consulting company, and she's a project manager for Arcadis. Just a brief introduction to what the Lead Service Line Initiative is. We'll get into some more details about regulatory, what it is. Amy will cover all of that for you guys. But we wanted to bring forward kind of some information on what we've gotten done in the last couple of years to meet whatever regulations we had to fulfill as a utility, and then talk a little bit about what we're going to be working on next, and how exactly that pertains to our water department with Groton Utilities. There is a lot of interaction with the public on this, so we wanted to make sure we came to you guys, the counselors, and kind of informed you on what it is that we're working on. Thank you, Dani.
All right, thanks so much, Kelsey. So I'm just going to walk through these slides, give an high overview of what the lead and copper rule is, and how Groton Utilities is complying with that. So, Kelsey already introduced me, and then Jen Kelly Lockmire, who is our Principal Director, is not here today, but she's part, integral part of the program. So, like I said, we're going to go high level, why we're doing this, why you guys are required to do this, a little bit about your system, the work that's been done, how you are currently in compliance. Talk a little bit about the website, the new website that's been come up, and really what you have to do moving forward. Why are we doing this? Lead and copper rule is a United States federal regulation, part of the Safe Drinking Water Act. This is the third iteration of that rule. It came out in 1991. There was a revision in 2021, that's what you hear a lot about, the LCRi, LCRR, LCRi. And then, going into effect on December 30th is the lead and copper rule improvements. This is the most robust of them all. This is really where you're going to start to see changes that are required, which is really why we're here today to update you guys on that. All right, a little bit about your system. 30,000 direct customers impacted by this, about 8,300 service connections. Of the 8,300, 492 have what's known as unknown service line material classification, meaning despite all the efforts that GU put in to try to identify these service line materials, we still do not know what the service line material is. Five then have been identified as galvanized, and two that are considered lead. Overall, those numbers are really good. For a little background, if you look at this image here, you've got your water main in the middle of the road, and then you have your house here. There's two pieces of a service line with a curb stop in the middle, the piece that runs from the water main to the curb, and the piece that runs from the curb stop into the house. So when we're talking about service line material, and we say something's lead, it could be on either side, or both. So that's a differentiator when we're talking regulatory, they talk about both sides. And you guys, as you know, service many, four service areas, Gales Ferry, Ledgerd, Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority, and the casino. Yeah, Mashen Ticket Casino. Okay, so again, an overview of your inventory, what you found. Of the 8,300, 7,801 are considered non-led, plastic, copper, anything but lead. That's really, really great. You have five that we call galvanized requiring replacement, meaning they're galvanized lines, and at one point or another, they were either downstream of a lead service line, or unknown, meaning we don't know what they were downstream of, so they have to be classified as this. Two lead, and then that 492 that are unknown. All of the, all of this information was taken from records. The utility has worked very hard for years to go through all of the known, you know, any plan sets they had, record drawings from over the years, to try to populate this information. And here it is, here is the robust LCRR, LCRi regulatory timeline that all utilities across the country have to abide by. We started in 2021. That was really the big drive here, doing GIS updates, developing what's known as the service line inventory, populating all this information. You guys did a lot of in-house training, so that everybody understood what was going on. We had a big date this October. It was required to take that inventory that you developed, submit it to the Department of Public Health, as well as send out notification letters to everyone in your community that had either a lead service line, a GRR. And then, starting in December, that rolls out the LCRi. And I'm not going to go into this in detail, but it just shows that this is ongoing, and there's a lot of requirements that are going to be through the years, related to increased lead and copper sampling, school and childcare programs. So this isn't going away, it is a thing. And, let's see, any other big things? I don't think so. Okay. So what have you guys done? Service line inventory was submitted successfully by the October 16 deadline. That was a huge effort. Notification letters were sent out. 776 service line inventory notification letters were sent out. 463 of those were sent to Ledgerd, 313 were sent out to GU. Again, just work that's been done. These letters, if you live and got one of these letters, there was very specific regulatory language that was required, mostly related to health effects of lead. So if you hear this, you know, throughout the community, "I got this letter that says there's lead in my water," all of that was really strict language that was required to be in there. And we can jump right over to the, do you want to, do you want me to finish, or do you want to go into the website?
I can pull it up. If you mind handing me the keyboard really quick.
As part of these initiatives, we wanted to make sure that our communication with the public was open. So with that, Groton Utilities put together a tab within our website. Ooh, it doesn't like the glass very much. I'll borrow your paper.
Yeah, if you put it on a piece of paper.
There you go, much better. Thank you. I'm just going to pull up our Groton Utilities website here. And we can navigate very briefly. You guys are free to look at this anytime, but I do want to just show it today. On our very front page here, we do have a link to our Lead Service Line project. Within this link, it explains the general overview of what exactly the Lead Service Line inventory is. Many people from the public may have questions about why we're doing this, the EPA and the DPH mandates that require it. All within this website, we explain that. We also, sorry, I'm just going to exit out of that. We also went ahead and put some quick looks here. As we mentioned, we sent out letters, and it's an ongoing effort to continue to identify those unknown service lines within our system. With that, we are asking members of the public to help self-identify. Just to offer a little bit of context, the service lines in Groton Utilities are technically owned by our customers, from what we refer to as the main into the meter. So with most systems, the utility generally owns from the main to the curb box, but Groton Utilities does not. So, the fact that we were able to identify the several thousand that we were able to is just a testament to the records that we do have on hand. So for the ones that we do need a little bit of help with, we're asking for help self-identifying. We also have some resources here for inquiry to our customer service group, to get them in contact with our project group, if they have any questions or concerns about what's going on. And more importantly, on our website, we have basically a GIS system that we were able to put together of all these service records. So if anyone has any questions or concerns about what their service line may be at their home or their business, they're able to look that up here. And we're actually going to have Cesar do a quick demonstration of that. Make sure you got the microphone.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think this thing's on.
Oh, yeah.
Hello? Okay. Yeah, all right.
So, this map was set up to be, you know, somewhat intuitive for the public to come in access, to see their line composition. So I'm just going to bring up a couple examples right now, just to kind of show how all of it is kind of brought together through this, we're calling it a dashboard. So this is, I'm not sure if this is the mayor's address, or the deputy, this is the mayor's address.
That's me, 156.
Yeah, 156, yeah.
You got me.
All right. So, you type it in, you type in the address, it brings you right to the address. You can, you can look at the material composition. They're also symbolized, there's a legend. For anyone who, you know, has questions, there's a legend that breaks down the symbol that shows up in the area of your property. And then, also, when you, when you select your point, it also prompts, prompts the individual to self-identify, because we really want that to happen. So you would fill out this form, and there's a, you know, there's fields here, and, well, it won't let me go ahead until I enter things, but, yeah, pretty much, that's, that's the gist of it. You look up your, your property, and select it to get further information, and then you're prompted to self-identify.
Cesar, do you want to just click on the address so we can show them how?
Yeah, so you can, so yeah, it's, you have to navigate down here to the Service Line Material Information table to get a little more information. It's kind of been limited to just kind of the key details that we expect a member of the public would want. So just what exactly their line is made out of, what is the material, which we do have that information, that goes a little deeper than just non-led, or, you know, non-led, unknown or galvanized, requiring replacement, any of those codes. So, yep, that's, that's the tool, so. Yep, that's my piece.
Maybe in her outlook, or? Oh, on the top, maybe?
Oh, yeah. There you go.
So really, this next slide just talks about where do we go from here, what's required next? As long as there are unknowns in the system, those 400, a lead service line plan will be required. So basically, the EPA and Connecticut Department of Public Health are saying, you need to tell us how, what you're going to do with those unknowns, how you're going to identify that service line material, and if it is lead or GRR, what you're going to do to replace it, and your schedule and plan for doing that. So this plan isn't due until November 1, 2027. Hopefully, that, by that point, we're far ahead of the game, and we don't have any more unknowns, and we don't have any more lead in the system, but that is the requirement. So, lead service line replacement options, where do you go from here, really? If there's known lead or GRR, then they have to be replaced. That's very tricky in terms of who is responsible for replacing it. The lead and copper rule just says several things, but they're, they're vague enough, but they do make one thing clear. If a homeowner is going to replace their side of the line, and they notify the utility that they're doing that, then the utility is responsible for replacing the utility side of the line. That's really all it says in specifics about who's responsible for doing what. You know, and there's different ways you can go about this. So if you look here, different payment options. Right now, we know that there are two replacements required to date, and we currently anticipate five additional replacements. That could go up and down as we, you know, identify what those unknowns are. And again, there's different ways to get this done, and the average cost of a service line replacement is about $7,000. You know, we've seen different communities do different things, float zero interest loans, there's a lot you can do, but as the utility moves forward, you know, they'll come up with a, I don't know. I believe that is all I have.
I'd just like to offer a little bit more context, too, of the makeup of those 400, roughly, service lines. So part of the initiatives here, we were also required to report on anyone who we considered a master metered or a privately owned customer. That also includes EB, Pfizer, the SEB base, some of our larger private customers. About 50% of what we have left in unknown is going to be working with those, quote-unquote, what we refer to as master metered customers. We still have a couple apartment complexes we're working through. So by no means is this, we submitted on October 16, but we're still very actively working on identifying any unknowns in our system. The next step for our, what we like to call, we refer to them technically as our expected, or, excuse me while I'm blanking on the word here, our projected lead. So we have a couple in our system that we think could potentially be lead goos next, but we have to look into the size and go field verify them, and make sure that they are actually lead before we move ahead with any kind of replacement. And we're also going to be doing that with the five galvanized requiring replacement, so that we can get those taken care of. So we'll be financially planning for those within the next year.
Okay, with that, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, are, just to clarify, are we saying that there are going to be residents that are going to have to spend more than $7,000 to comply with this federal regulation if they have lead pipes between their house and our pipes?
Ron, do you want me to speak to this, or would you prefer to speak to it? The financial, okay. So, that's a potential. So like I explained earlier, the service lines that are in the system are technically all owned by customers. So they're not ours, as far as the utility does not own them. Ron is exploring the potential for doing non, no interest loans to these customers that may not be able to pay for that upfront. We're still working through the details on how to work all that out, but it is a priority of ours to make sure that things are getting replaced, so.
So, hold on, I want to address this a little more. So we're having internal discussions to look at the number of confirmed, and what that would be, and how we're going to address it. Right now, we're looking at, it could be low interest, it could be a zero interest loan, it could be other, other things that we have to do that have not come yet on the table. Well, I don't think we've talked to the customers yet about, we sent out a letter, but we haven't talked about, here's the line, those kind of things. We are looking at how the util, how we are going to manage through this and get those lines replaced.
So, is the federal regulation saying that it's our responsibility to force homeowners to change their pipes, and that if they don't, we are going to be responsible for not following this federal regulation? Because a homeowner, potentially?
So, the regulation says that the utility has 10 years, starting three years from now, so technically 13 years from right now, to remove all the lead in your community. That is what it says. So it does not say you are responsible for paying for that. It's vague on who's responsible for the payment, but it does say that that is the requirement.
So could a resident argue that we should be responsible for that payment? And do we anticipate that happening?
Probably not till now, but yes.
Well, I could, I could, I think you could make an argument, but it's not supported by the federal legislation that's written at current. So basically, it's, the enforcement is to the public utility to notify that you have a certain type of material in your system, so that people are aware. Right? It's about bringing the awareness to it, and the replacement, the get the lead out initiatives, it's not clear in any written legislation yet, as far as financial responsibility.
Okay.
Period. Sorry.
Like I said, we're having internal conversations on how to address this and how to go about this. If it's, if we find out that we have a handful, that makes it a lot easier for us to make a decision than if we have 400. The requirement is, the lines have to be replaced, and the government doesn't care who replaces them, just as long as they're replaced.
Yes.
And so, that's where the challenge that we have, because the government doesn't say, this body will, or this body will, it says, they got to be replaced.
And just to clarify on the timeline, we briefly went over that, that slide. With the ones that we are expecting to potentially be lead, or that we know are galvanized requiring replacement, so we're talking about seven lines right now, within that, about 8,500 service lines. Those are, you know, we're trying to address them sooner rather than later, and our first step there is just to do verification of what the line is. But we do have 10 years between 2027 and 2037, yeah, to actually plan for the removal, if we do find more in the system.
But so far, Groton Utilities has been very proactive on this.
Yes.
And we've identified what we have so far, and then there's some that are outstanding. And that's going to actually require a dig, right? It's going to require a test bed to identify what the material is, to do, because you have to do a visual inspection. And so we'll be doing that in the near future.
Yes.
Well, we're actually doing it now, but we're going, that's, we're not going to wait until we have to, we're getting ahead of it now. Did that answer your question? I gave you an answer.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Sheffield?
What would happen if the regulations get rolled back upon a new administration on January 20, as far as this lead and copper rule improvements? What happens if regulations become laxed? What, how is that? I mean, we're saying, you know, they're going to have these rules, but would if things change? And then what?
They have a really special publication date, right? December 30.
December 30.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to speak to that part, and then I can comment on?
Sure. So, this will go into effect on December 30, December 30. It will be published, so we don't anticipate this getting rolled back at all.
Okay.
It's tied to the clean water, drinking water, the Safe Drinking Water Act, so I don't, we don't anticipate that changing.
And regardless of whether it changes or not changes, we're going to follow the law that is in place at the time.
Okay, I mean, just in case it decides to be dismantled, you never know.
Well, I understand, but at this table, we can't, at this table, we need to follow the, whatever the rules are.
Well, absolutely.
Don't know what the rules are going to be. We don't have any control of that, so right now, we know what the rules are, we're going to follow those rules, and we're currently in compliance.
It's also good to note that the LCRi is an EPA mandated legislation, where the Connecticut Department of Health could still choose to be more stringent than the EPA is choosing to be, so.
So that's a good thing, having the state be a backstop, just in case.
Yeah, it, it just, we have to stay abreast on what the regulation is at the time, so it's going to be published December 30, and then really from there, we'll be looking for more guidance from the Connecticut Department of Health.
Good, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Counselor Norris?
With the 500 galvanized lead and unknown, do you have any common factors in terms of location, or age, anything like that?
Cesar, have you looked into the specific data on that? Right now, as far as I know, it's randomized throughout the system.
Yeah, I mean, it's typically, the older the property is, the more likely it is to be unknown. We're, like, we're looking at weighting different factors to kind of steer, like, investigation activities, like prioritizing certain attributes about lines. So, but yeah, typically, it's older, it's the older, the farther, the farther back you go in time. go in time, the less clear things are.
Yeah, so for our GRR and lead, I just want to reiterate, there's only two lead right now and five GRR. The rest of the unknowns are randomized throughout the system. The only place that we found some clustering was up in Ledgerd, and that's because that, we kind of inherited their records at one point, and some of their records were really good and some of them were not. So we do have a couple of communities that we're working with Ledgerd on, we're figuring out our next steps with them, whether we're going to continue to do their inventory or if they're going to be taking that on on their own, because they're technically a separate WPCA.
And we did, we did, when the Grunt Utilities Commission was briefed on this, Commissioner Godley asked about his house, because he has an old house. And we pulled him up and his lines had been, were changed, I don't know, early, you know, back in the 50s or 60s or whatever. So even though you may have an old house, if your service was, for example, we don't have an obituary of electric anymore, right? So the electric's probably been changed, some waters have been changed, and if the waters have been changed, then they're probably not galvanized or lead.
Yeah, we have over 100 years' worth of service records and some proceeding cards as well that we've gone through. Just so you guys know, the lead, like, stop date, like, the cutoff, there's another category in here that we'll be working on as well, which is unknown not lead, meaning if it was built after 1990. So we have a pretty good indication that those unknowns right now are homes that were built before the 1990 cutoff date, but other than that, there's, the grouping of where they're located within our system is randomized.
So the last thing I have, and I'm going to say no one's discussed this yet, what is this, if there is a refusal factor from the homeowner, how does that go?
Yeah, so we're required, and Amy can speak more to this, to make a certain number of contacts.
You have to contact four times documented that you have, you know, either tried to get into their home to do an inspection, you've sent a certified letter, you've, you know they have lead and you want to replace it, you have to have four documented, you know, attempts. And then once you have those on record, you can say, you know, we tried, basically EPA, we're in compliance, we tried to get ahold of these people, our records say they have lead, they will not let us in, and that's considered sufficient.
Sufficient for what?
Sufficient for compliance. So if we have a documented, so if the EPA came back to us and said, you know, this is your inventory that you submitted to the Department of Public Health, and you have these three addresses that say they have lead, and why didn't you replace them? And the utility could come back and say, we tried, this was our four documented attempts for each one of these, to reach the homeowner or get into their property, and they wouldn't let us in, then at that point, you would be considered in compliance.
Okay, allow me to change the question.
But, well, hold on, let me address that a little more. So we've not had these discussions internally, but from a health safety point of view, I would want to get Ledgerd involved, my public health department involved, and do an educational component with the homeowners so that they would understand why this is important and to replace the line. You know, that is above, still taking into account the deputy's question about who pays for it, but, but that's a, I would want to educate them so that they understand the importance of why we're doing this. I mean, it's not just the government coming in and, and trying to strong arm them into, I don't know, changing it out for whatever reason.
So I guess that's where I'm going in terms of strong arm in the resident.
Right.
So we talked about, you know, the resident may have to pay for their part of the piping. What if they say no?
Yeah, so at that point, I think that if we're finding within the project group that we're having a hard time gaining traction with any residents as far as replacement, we would be escalating that between the director and the mayor to make a decision about how we're going to handle it as a utility. I don't have that guidance right this second, so I apologize.
Well, this is-
No, it's understandable.
The, the, so the investigations we've been doing, the notification we just started doing, and then the ramifications of this act have just started. So we haven't-
Right.
Went to the homeowners yet and said, hey, oh, by the way, you got to remove your line. And so once those communications start, I'm sure that there will be, based on the feedback, there will be internal discussions of, okay, now what? And how do we, you know, how, because there, there's lots of different things, there are a lot of different reactions that could come out. So, and we will address it as we, as we go along.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then that's all we have, all right?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing is a sewer rate ordinance question answered. Erin?
Thank you for having me back. Sorry I wasn't here last week. I, I think you guys definitely came up and had some good discussion and some good questions. And sorry I wasn't here to maybe answer all of those at, at the time. So I'm back here, hopefully to answer any questions that I can and kind of go from there. I wanted to preface everything with, with a little bit of a narrative here. So Grunt Utilities exists to improve the quality of life for the residents that we serve. We do that provided, by providing foundational infrastructure necessary for a resilient and vibrant community to thrive. This rate case is a small step towards proper care of that infrastructure. Residents expect our services to be available 24/7, 365. When they flick the switch, flush the toilet, or turn on the faucet, they just simply expect it to work. Part of making it work, beyond general operations and maintenance, the priority for any utility is capital investment in the infrastructure. This rate case provides funding for CCTV system surveys, pipelining, manhole rehabilitations, SCADA upgrades, pump stations, and electrical upgrades. We have 90,000 linear feet of pipe that needs rehabilitation, 30 manholes to rehabilitate, 50 manhole covers to seal, and five pump stations to rehabilitate. With all these costs, it's really important for us to fairly and equitably allocate the costs across the customer base. Staff has proposed, and the Utility Commission has vetted and approved, a rate design that does just that. Through this rate case, the industrial class will see an increase of 9%, impacting two customers. The commercial class will see an increase of 5%, impacting 200 customers. And the residential class will be impacted the least, with an average 4.8% increase, impacting 2,500 customers. Furthermore, low-income residents with an average usage of 288 cubic feet will have the least impact, at 3.5%, impacting approximately 800 customers. It's also too important, important to note that even during these times of high cost, our city residents with all three services, electric, water, and wastewater, actually will see a net decrease year over year. And that's due to the lower purchase power adjustment on the electric bill that took effect in May. So the average resident with all three services will have a, a net decrease of 4% over last year. One of the, one of the big questions that I heard when I watched back the council meeting really centered around that 300 cubic feet threshold. So I wanted to give just a, a brief explanation to that. So during our cost of service study, we, we want to make sure that we understand our allocations between fixed and volumetric charges. So we conduct what's called a minimum system. And what we looked at is all customers' usage, basically all customers use 300 cubic feet. And so we set that as a threshold, and we allocated the, a portion of the collection system at 300 cubic feet into the fixed cost. So there was that, that breakpoint, and that's why it was set that way. So the, the higher block two rate really is collecting on both the collection system and processing at the plant. The lower block one is, is just for plant processing, because 300 cubic feet with the collection system was allocated in the fixed cost. And with that, I'll just try to answer any questions that I can.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Are there any questions? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, ma'am. Of the things that you said just now, clarify some things.
Sure.
But I've talked to some people and just alerted them to watch the video, look up the information, pay attention to what's going on, just to get the feedback, whether they're going to write to us, mayor, GU, so forth and so on. I myself, so yes, 300 wasn't an issue for me, not for me just personally, but also for the citizens. So you're saying lower income is at 288? One of my understanding, though, most, lower income are not paying for water, is that correct?
Well, so when we did this analysis, so, so this was my staff along in conjunction with customer service, and we pulled a listing of all customers that have accounts and receive financial assistance, right? Cross-referenced that with city residents and then looked up water, right? So that's how the, it was conducted. I will say there are Section 8 housing that the tenants don't have accounts, so they would not be part of this study.
So I look at a lot of things medically. So when you're looking at a lot of things, whether you're helping somebody, assisting somebody, decide what rates are going to be, so forth and so on, collectively, insurance wise line, liaison for people for that. I don't collectively look at those who can afford and those who can't afford, look at what they're affording and where they're at. So I, I, and this may be strong words, but I feel like this formula, to me, I like the mission, but I'm really wondering if the mission, to me, I feel like it's financially discriminating to me, to the customers. And I know that's strong words, but I do, I just can't seem to move through that because on the chart, over and over and over again, you have, commercial is not receiving any increase in rate in the chart that we've received, and you can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's incorrect.
Or one inch, a three-quarter wrench, all the way up to the two-inch. I, I understood, was told that that's commercial, and there's no rate increase for them through, across the three years.
On the fixed charge.
On the fixed charge.
They certainly are seeing an increase on the volumetric, and they use significantly more, so they will have an increase.
Right, and one of the statements you made, you said customers, I'm assuming like residential, well, I think you said residential, was it residential customers? You said like to have the toilet staphage lifelong-
I would say all customers, businesses need it just as much as-
Yeah, I think that's what you said, residential, but I was like, all customers.
Absolutely.
All customers.
Yeah, reliability in my mind is number one.
Sure. I think just since I've been on council, they, there was a rate increase before I even came in, so this is like, I think, the third one since I've been in, it's my second term.
Sure.
But I mean, you know, they come in and say, well, we need to buy this, we need to buy, we need to purchase this, we need to get that, this happened, this was unexpected. But I, I don't know, I just, I don't know if I'm seeing a pattern. I mean, I know it's a lot of this trickling from the top and everything's costing more, but it's, I just, the way to me that's been presented, and maybe I misunderstood it, maybe even correctly. So what I'm hearing most is we went by population and, but here's, it's, it's, we, we went by population basically, not volume, so that's what I thought I understood. So we collectively have more residents than we do commercial. And that would sound like that was the basis for what their base rate would be. Another comment that was made was, well, they're already paying a high base rate anyway. To me, so, that's how I feel. So they're paying the base rate, and we're worried about them leaving, well, we can have residents leave also. So, you know, I'm just looking at both ways. These are just things that I heard and, you know, talking to others so that if anybody had something different, they knew a little bit more, I did some research on it, so forth and so on, and did not send any questions because I really, still was not clear. But it's just what I feel, specifically, are, are we being financially responsible to our constituents? And now we're having this chat today about water and that they might, because something that they had built was allowed, and on and on and on and on and on, and now, of course, it's coming from the top, and now they may have to pay huge amounts of money to have that changed. And in driveway, I mean, I'm like, maybe being vulnerable, like, why doesn't everybody just buy a filter? Have them all purchase an in-house filter instead of changing all these pipes and tearing up the road and messing around with the driveways and blah, 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 and the lawns, whatever? You know, so, I mean, we're looking, we are looking down, and I understand this is for EPA, partner of public health, I totally understand it, nursing, you have lead exposure, so forth and so on. But my other thing, my question, one of my questions is, was there other avenues searched and researched to be more cost-effective than laying it down on the residents over the three-year period? Was there any other way that was searched? Did you, has it been presented, like, well, we did these numbers and we actually felt that we did a cost-effective, we tried this, where we're going to do, I don't know, you can bring up an example for me, I'm not really sure, but, you know, and that didn't work, and blah, 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 and that didn't work. We tried these different formulas. And I'm just really, really aghast at the 300. You're saying the, who was it that used 288 again?
Low income.
Low income. So we're just top-notch above low income. And low income, did we look at the capacity of their homes? Like, did we look at two-bedroom, three-bedroom, size of family?
I don't have all that data.
Okay, so I should, I just, I think a little more detail could have been put in the study. I don't know how much time has been put into this, I'm sure a lot. But it's just, to me, I just can't move through it being financially discriminatory, I think.
I believe this is probably the most equitable sewer rate we've ever put in place.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, I'm going to be honest, I find this conversation a little frustrating because it's not new. Can you, for people who haven't been here for many years, as some of us have, can you tell us what happened when the sewer rate was not charged by usage and charged in the tax base? What that did to how we managed the sewer department?
I don't know if I'm the best to speak to that, because I, I-
How, how did we control budgets and what projects we did, and how, how is that different than charging for use?
What I will say is, one is, a user fee is more equitable, right? So this goes back to that same conversation, because instead of a high user basically getting a discount because it's flat-rated, they pay based on usage, right? And then your low use pays less because they're using less, and so it is more equitable that way. Furthermore, I also think that the utility is the proper place for care of the infrastructure. It's what we do, it's all we do. And so when you put the infrastructure and care of the utility, I just think it's the proper place versus a tax scroll. So I can talk to that.
Can you, so I know we're talking about usage numbers. So obviously, the industrial customers use much, much more.
Sure.
So if the average, I think the average customer, is it 450 or 500 is-
Yeah, 445.
About how much per month does an industrial customer use? Just for comparison's sake? Like, it's super round number, not like above-
1.2 million cubic feet per month.
So, if you multiply that by the increase, that's where we're getting, that's where the industrial customers are getting the big rate increase.
Yeah, you have two industrial customers that pay over 50% of the system.
So-
To give you an idea, and they're getting the biggest increase in this rate.
So I understand, and I know that when we, when we switched it to a use, user fee, there was a lot of confusion and, you know, discussion about it. But to me, I know that when that all happened, like you said, the residents were subsidizing basically the sewer cost for the bigger customers because it was just in the tax base, not based on usage. So I guess my other question is, in your mind, what would happen if we were running the sewer utility today with the budget we had four years ago for it? Like, what wouldn't we be able to afford?
An underfunded system just kicks the can down the road. So if, if we're not meeting our revenue targets, or if we don't have proper cost recovery, then you just delay everything. So you're, you delay the inevitable until it breaks. So you're, you delay the inevitable until it breaks, right? And so the reality is, is that I think we've delayed capital even in the last three years because we've been underfunded. And you can only do that so long until you sacrifice reliability, and that's what we don't want. So it's paramount that we have reliability and that we are able to contribute to our infrastructure.
I think, can I just say one more?
Go ahead, and then I do want to address a couple of things you said.
Um, I, I think the block charging is a creative way to limit the increase for residential customers while gaining a bigger increase from the customers that do use a lot of water, because I do think if you use more water, it requires more processing, it requires the system to work harder. I do think that if you use more water, you should pay a higher fee. I know, you know, the utility has run a lot of education campaigns, they do financial assistance, we do everything we can for as many people as possible. I know that when I'm more mindful, I don't leave the water running as much, and, you know, I think unfortunately, while we do represent people, the people of our community, we, part of that is making sure that we're solvent. And so I, I think that you guys do a great job. I think the cost of service study, and I'll, I'll repeat, I, I do know at the Utility Commission meetings, there is more detail, they ask different questions because they have different knowledge base than those of us up here. They have a lot, a lot of them have a lot more experience with the utility. So I, again, want to encourage customers who have questions, feel free to attend or watch a Utility Commission meeting, or read the minutes, or contact customer service. You know, our, our team, I actually just got another set of compliments a couple weeks ago about customer service and how polite they were, and how wonderful they were when someone asked questions. So I just want to encourage people, if they have a question about their rate, or why it's going up, or what it's used for, or if they can get assistance, please, please, please contact the utility, because we are a service utility. We are here to serve people.
Absolutely.
And I think that you guys are doing a great job, and it's a difficult decision to raise rates, but everything, all of our products do cost more. It costs more to do the work, and we can't absorb it without becoming insolvent. So that's all.
All right, I want, let me address a couple of things that, that you asked, Aaron, that he was a little uncomfortable with addressing. Let me address it. So when I became the mayor in 2017, the sewer was in the tax base. And one of the things that I said we're going to do is we're going to pull it out of the tax base, and we're going to make it an enterprise account and put it into the utility where it belongs. And the reason I say that is because there was a, there was a move, there was a discussion that got brought up early on about how do you get non-taxable entities to pay for the sewer? Because if you look at, if you look at electric water sewer, sewer is everybody in the City of Groton and North Slope. And then water is larger than that, and then electric, actually, electric's larger than that, and then water is larger than that, as far as customer base. But when you're talking sewer, you are talking City of Groton residents. When it was in the tax base, maintenance was being deferred because no one wanted to raise taxes. You have a million dollars worth of, if you have a million dollars, right now roughly, a rule of thumb, is a million dollars is one mil. And nobody wanted to raise tax rates. And so there was maintenance that was being deferred. And one of the things that occurred is that we had, it was referred to as a digester explosion, but it wasn't explosion, it was an overpressurization. But it actually lifted the roof, and we had to repair that. Now, we had insurance, but our rates also went up after that, but the insurance was around, I think, $700,000 for the repair. We then, we, during this period of time, so from May 17 until the next year's budget, Groton Utilities did a cost of service study. They, they studied this for almost a year of how are we going to do this? And customer service was heavily involved and did a lot of heavy lifting in order to get us to transition, because you had to, now you're going to be charging people and, and those kind of things. And for those of you that were around then and were paying attention, you probably remember some of the angst that people had, and oh my God, you're double taxing us, and those kind of things. This, this study, the, so we have had, so we had a rate in the beginning, we changed it once, and then this is going to be the second, second change, is that correct?
Yeah, so I think we're six years in.
Okay. So, right, we are now six years into this. So we, we have to maintain the infrastructure, because if it doesn't work, I mean, the question is, so what's more, you know, you get bragging rights, right? What's more important, electric, water, and sewer? And the electric guys go, well, if you turn a light on, it doesn't come on, people are all upset. So they say, yep, but you can, you can put a candle. And then the water guys, yep, if you don't turn the faucet on, no water comes out, people are all upset. Yep, but you can go get bottled water. The sewer guy says, what happens when you flush your toilet and it doesn't go anywhere? So this is extremely important. One of the things that we've done is we've talked about resiliency, and we've talked about sea level rise. One of the things that we've done in the last few years is we went in and inspected our sewer lining, our sewer pipes, and we've realigned them so that the water doesn't come in during the rain and get water infiltration, which puts more pressure on the plant, and it updates our, our service lines. So we, we need, and, and the, the, one of the things that the deputy talked about, one of the things that Aaron talked about, is use. You now pay for what you use, whereas before it was all tied into your taxes, and it was all based on how much your house costs. And now this is much more equitable with the way that we're doing it. And yep, it's, it's inconvenient that we got to raise rates, but this two-tiered system seems to be, and we'll find out in the next couple of years, but appears to be the best way to go about doing this. And I guess that's the additive information I wanted to add on from what the deputy brought up about when it was in the tax base before, because it really hasn't been that long ago. It's only been just a few years ago, six years ago. So, any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris.
I will agree that using this fee-based approach is actually much equitable, and actually helps those on the lower scale of family household income, so I commend you for that. Can you tell me, because I haven't been here that long, you haven't either, have you? What has been the average increase over the past five years?
3%.
3%? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, I just want to thank you for your explanation. I want to thank the counselors and the mayor for all their explanation, and I think that does help. I think maybe when it was first presented, there was a lot of questions, but I also feel too, I mean, we were given the opportunity, but I, which I'm glad that it's, it's being revisited today, because for me, I have a lot of questions, and a counselor making a vote is extremely, extremely important to me, extremely. I'm held accountable to that and anybody walking down the street looking at me, you know? So, I mean, the vote is on us, you know, and I just want to do right by people. So thank you for everybody explaining everything and before I came into place, I appreciate that.
No, I appreciate all you counselors and all the civil engagement, right? I mean, that's what it's all about, so thank you.
Counselor Sheffield?
Just to know, I guess, when these increases, I guess, they're going like three-year increments, is that going to be something that will continue moving forward? Is that kind of the goal we want to do, is doing in three-year increments as far as, you know, rate increases or decreases, whatever?
Yeah, and a general routine, it seems to have worked out fairly well for us, because we can do one enterprise account kind of a year, and keeps it manageable and keeps our focus for that year on the given enterprise account. So it seems to be a fairly decent pace. Certainly, it could change, but seems to be a good approach at this point.
So, coming off of that, honestly speaking, rates are probably, electric water sewer rates in general, when you're doing rate cases, they don't, they rarely go down, right? Because you have increases due to staffing, due to equipment, chemicals, infrastructure, capital projects, those kinds of things. One of the things that, that we are doing and, and is that instead of doing increases on all three enterprises in one year, is we stagger it so that one year you have electric, one year you have water, next year you have sewer, and it just rotates through, because we're on a three-year track on that. So it does look like that there's an increase every year, because we're addressing each of those enterprises. One of the things that I've talked to the, when we have internal meetings that, that I remind the utility about, because the utility is focused on running the utility, and trying to make sure that we're maintaining the utility, and they are sensitive to the, the users, the ratepayers, sorry, the ratepayers, the costs and those kind of things. But we, as council, we see that, and we, we represent the representative, the residents, and we see these increases, and we have to explain it. But we're doing, the utility is doing everything they can to try to keep the costs down, and they're not raising rates just to raise rates. And when you do comparisons of us to other utilities, we are still very low. In some cases, we're the lowest in the state, in some cases, we're not, but we're certainly in the, the lower, I don't know, do, can you, do you have a metric on that, lower, one-third lower?
Well, I, I can, electric is consistently in the bottom two, right? So we're, we're certainly one of two of the lowest in the entire state. Water, I think we're mid-pack, and wastewater, we're really only able to benchmark one, and we're very competitive against the one, but limited scope.
So those are the, you know, that's the lay of the land and what we're trying to do. All right, is there anything else? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of December 16th, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
All right, North Star? Tina, is that you?
Good evening, I'm going to apologize, I have no voice whatsoever. I was at the Waterford Killenley football game yesterday, and I screamed for two hours straight, so. The, it's in regards to the North Star maintenance contract. It's our, it's our annual maintenance contract, we have it every single year, it's our customer information system, and we see it every year.
Right. Deputy Mayor Depot?
This isn't necessarily about that, but I haven't seen you in a while, and I just wanted to say, I, I have gotten so many compliments recently from a couple, actually, of new residents who just moved here, and others about positive interactions with customer service, so I just want to say thank you. You're doing a great job, and your team is excellent.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 12/16/24.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Ron, Medici?
Mark Dibella, he has his firm, Medici. Medici is our lobbying services that the GU has used for decades at this point. We have not had a price increase since 2018, and he watches everything going on at the state level and in the legislature for us. This year, we were very involved with work on EVs and the EV infrastructure. At one point, we had all the municipals feed him information on what costs it would be to upgrade the infrastructure to be able to support EV charging. He's also been working on, he, he helped get the microgrid to move forward at the subbase. CMAC has a fuel cell at the subbase, and there was funds from the state that came for that. And he also watches things for us on the side, because GU is very involved in doing well for the community, and he helps just monitor things like the Heritage Foundation, the Ferry and stuff like that, the state does fund that every year. And GU doesn't do that directly, but we monitor that because we've given a lot of money to those type of things in the city, and we have an interest in all that. It's an annual renewal, we've done, we do this every year, and I'm game for any questions.
Okay, we'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
What would it cost us to hire someone in-house to do the work that he does, including benefits? Estimated, a person with his resume and ability?
I know Norwich has a person on staff that does that, and they probably pay him this plus 40%. And that's without benefits and anything.
I, I know, like, for me personally, I scrutinize a lot of the things that we contract out, and in my mind, I'm always thinking like, oh, could we do this cheaper in-house for lots of things? And to me, this is something that we could not do cheaper in-house. And I know, since I've been here quite a long time, he does provide a lot of resources and information for us, so to me, this is a very valuable contract, and it's really nice that he doesn't price gouge us and increase a ton every year. But I know he's been very valuable to the utility, so I, to me, this is a good contract renewal.
I, I believe there's a large payback for this contract to the city overall.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris?
So you did say, first of all, I agree with the deputy mayor, there's even a set of side pay, there's just so much going on in the lobbyist world to even keep track of it every hour. But you said the last time this, so it was 2018, it has not seen an increase?
No.
So can you tell me what it was in 2018?
I believe the increase, it was probably slightly over 100,000. I, I can't actually remember off the top of the bat, but it was a, I think it used to be like 102?
Okay.
I remember it was about 95.
Was it?
But that was, again, 11 years ago for me, so, you know, it was a little under 100, but it's not bad at all. Can't complain.
Thank you, I.
Any other, Counselor Norris, did that answer, did that address your question?
Well, I didn't get an answer, but it's fine, I was just curious, because I was trying to work out what percentage was, but.
Do you have an?
So in 2018, it was 100,000? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I will take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of 12/16/24.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. All right, Trimble, annual support system software? Bill?
Thank you, Mayor, deputy mayor and council. Tonight, I'm requesting approval for a fee of $58,727.97. That is to purchase annual maintenance and support from the Trimble Energy Distribution Utilities. It's a. Energy Distribution Utilities. It's an annual fee, runs from January 1st through December 31st. It supports our outage management system as well as the distribution management system. So that's the OMS and the DMS system. Comes with the GIS support and networking. So metering and everything else. Very important tool for our electrical distribution team for outage, outages.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot.
What was the rate for last year?
I don't have that. Eve, did you happen to have that? Do you know if the fee went up from last year?
5% increase.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting, excuse me, 121624.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, fleet vehicle replacements?
Okay, so tonight GU is requesting approval to purchase three new light-duty vehicles, paid for from the electrical non-bonded capital budget. Purchase will be from Jangris Ford, who is on a state bid list. We have three vehicles that are at end of life. One is a 2007 E250 van. That is badly rotted. The frame is beyond deteriorating. It's off the road. The next is a 2006 Ford Ranger. Transmission has failed. It too is at an end of life. The last one is a 2010 F-150. The frame is badly rusted. The exhaust manifold is cracked. The vehicle's been red-tagged. All three of these vehicles have been off the road for a little bit of time. They all need replacement. We're looking to replace them with two 2025 F-150 Ford Lightning Pro model. That's the base model. They're EVs, so electric vehicles. The third vehicle is a 2025 Ford Explorer 4x4. The fee for the EVs, the 150 Lightnings, is $45,700 each, which I think is a very decent price. The Explorer, the price on that is $38,488. The total of the requests for the approval would be $129,888. A little bit about the Lightnings, I did a bunch of work researching to these. So they're the Gen 2 model that's coming out for the Lightning. It's been out for a few years now. Gen 2 has an increased battery capacity. So they went from roughly 230 miles. Now they're up to 320 miles on a full charge. There are, the vehicle itself is three years, 36,000 mile warranty, but the batteries and the powertrain on them are a 10-year warranty. I reached out to other manufacturers for this exact vehicle. They're getting $66,000. So for the price of $45,700, I think it's a great deal. The body is aluminum, so it's rust-free. And then the added perk to it is they all come with a onboard generator, so it powers up all of our portable tools, et cetera, anything that we need on the job. That's it.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot.
Where are these vehicles going to be charged?
They'll be charged over at the operations building. We currently have two stations online, and we're actually replacing the charging stations at Washington Park. We're going to take those juice box units, bring them over to operations, and utilize them on site. So we'll have four stations over there.
So you don't plan to take up spots here or at the park?
Nope, absolutely not. Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Now, these are going to be brand-new, I take it, 2025?
Brand-new.
Okay. Now, a used vehicle wouldn't be able to, you know?
We're going to auction the old ones off. They're beyond the end of life.
No, I'm saying purchasing a used.
So that, yeah, so it's a great question. So the 2024s, we're unable to get any Lightnings right now. So they're actually going to start manufacturing in January, and we hope to be on the list pretty early. I anticipate we'll get the vehicles in March. Yep.
So we, interesting you asked, have you asked that question here before?
I think so.
Okay. We had an internal discussion about used versus new, and typically, utilities, municipalities like to buy new because you know what you get, and you get your warranty, those kinds of things. When you're buying used, you don't know what you're going to get. And so that's why we tend to go with new. And we're on a state bid list, so it ends up being cheaper, right, for us. Counselor Norris?
Well done.
Thank you.
Like it a lot. Got a quick question because I think I heard you say you're going to take charging stations from Washington Park and take them somewhere else.
So we're replacing the existing stations that are over there right now.
Okay.
Those are juice box units. We're going with the ChargePoint units, similar to what's right out front here. We have four chargers out here, two over there. We're going to grab the two juice box units, place them over in operations, and install brand-new juice box units here.
What does ChargePoint mean?
That's the manufacturer of the unit. There's several manufacturers, but that's what we're utilizing now.
So.
They're better.
Question for an answer for another time.
Sure.
My understanding is the charge stations that is in Washington Park, a user doesn't pay for it, the utility is.
Okay, let me address that. So the reason we're changing the heads is though, out here, I wanted to start charging, and I was, and internal staff said, you don't want to charge here and not charge there. So we are replacing the heads there with ChargePoint heads, and then as soon as that's done, we're going to start charging for all of our electric chargers. In addition to that, for those people that want to stay hooked up and just hang out for a long period of time, there's going to be a mechanism so that it recognizes once you're charged fully, and then it will start charging you a fee for parking. And that, the intent there is so that you don't have people just leaving overnight or coming in here in the morning, plugging them in, going to work, and coming back. We want you, we want to be able to free them up, and everybody have an opportunity to use the electric vehicle chargers.
Another perk with this, so the juice box, they're a couple of years old. They're actually a 30-amp circuit. So the new ones are ChargePoints or a newer generation. They were 40-amp circuit. So they'll actually charge the vehicle a little bit quicker. We're going to take the older ones and utilize them over on the ops.
That's good thinking.
Okay.
So we also have chargers at ops, but these will be two more chargers.
Correct. We'll be up the floor over there.
Right. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 121624.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Ron, who's talking to Bosra? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So what I am speaking to primarily is the 824. This, the sale of the Bosra office building, which is not located within the city, is being, has been, was voted on by the Bosra Utility Commission in order to allow them to sell it. The Bosra Utility Commission is under Grattan Utilities, which is under the city. So it took us a minute to figure out what the right process was, but we've got it. So they voted to sell it. Their staff has been working in this building on the other side for a while now, consolidating services here. That has been, so they've approved selling it because it is, they don't need it. Assuming that the council declares it excess property, the Planning and Zoning Commission has said that they have no problem with selling it. It is, although not directly consistent with the POCD because the POCD does not address this issue, but it is certainly consistent with the intent and with, there's certain aspects that address energy and that address just cost savings, and it's consistent with that. So they voted unanimously to allow for the sale. And that is.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Now, the sale of this property, the proceeds will go to?
Bosra Lightning Power.
Okay, which would be in this building for?
Well, yes. Bosra Lightning Power is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Grattan Utilities, and the city of Grattan owns Grattan Utilities. So does that?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure with the proceeds, would that, with Bosra, the town itself have any interest as far as, okay?
In the past, we had customer service and finance in Bosra. We have consolidated that to here, so there's no longer a need for that piece of property. There is another piece of property that is up there that is, that belongs to the utility, which is the garage that's up there, and that has some inventory up there that's easy to get to instead of trying to bring, you know, bring everything up there when you need it. But that's not what's on the table, just the, this piece of property. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris?
I know the answer, but I need to hear it. So not too long ago, Grattan Utilities was considering finding and purchasing a building. Was this property considered?
This property was not in play then.
What does in play mean?
This property was not available. It was being utilized as for customer service and for finance. Plus, that was for IT here. Local IT was what that building was going to be used for.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So the short answer is no, but there's a reason why it wasn't considered is because it was being utilized for something else.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of December 16th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay?
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
Okay, Finance Department, U-House, Director U-House is not here. I'll speak to this real quick. Hopefully, there's not a lot of questions on it. But this is a property tax refund. We've seen these before with vehicles. This is now one for New London Seafood. For the taxes, they were overtaxed, and this is basically a refund to them. So that's what this motion is about. Okay. Any questions? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 121624.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, the JAG grant, chief's going to move this to the last meeting in December. So that takes us to the Fire Department, SCBA Bottles, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. I think you have some backup material. This is pretty straightforward. The self-contained breathing apparatus we wear to go into dangerous environments. The bottles have a 15-year life, and then you have to replace them. So they're at end of life. They need to be replaced. We've downsized a little because of the way we run now, so we need 31 bottles to be replaced. I got a price from Shipman's Fire Equipment. It's from Sourcewell, so it's, it's been bid. And, yeah, that's, there is money in the CIP. I have put $10,000 the last four years in anticipation of this replacement, so.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, hearing nine, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 121624.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, fire truck repair?
Okay, fire truck repair. Sounds like we've been here before. So, so one of our engines, G11, out of Company One, was having a problem pulling hard to the left. We had Shipman's Fire Equipment come and look at it. They thought it was a suspension issue. So we sent it to FireMatic in Rocky Hill. They're the Pierce dealership. Pierce is the type of truck that we have. So when they got it up there, they diagnosed a frozen caliper and some suspension issues, control arms and things of that nature. That truck is redlined right now. We are down, we're running one engine right now because the ladder truck is still being worked on. Because in the process of them working on a ladder truck, their fault, the Corvilles' fault, they damaged the shaft, and they're having a problem getting that shaft. Yeah, the original estimate was March. We're hoping for earlier, but I don't know. So, so the repair for the engine, for the brakes and the suspension is 11,000, so obviously that's over the 10,000 mark. I do have operational funds to, you know, maintain and repair the trucks. So it would come out of, would come out of that. We did, Pierce is the dealer. Shipman's would not bid, you know, estimate the job because in their mind, it's proprietary, and so they didn't want to estimate it. Corvilles has our other truck. If you remember, last time, we did get estimates. FireMatic was actually a little cheaper, but Corvilles already had our truck, and it was taken apart, so it would cost more money to put it back together. But it's at FireMatic now. They've redlined it because it is not safe to drive, so we would have to tow it around to try and get estimates. So that's where we are. Any questions?
Open the floor for discussion. All right, hearing nine, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 121624.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, we'll move to Beach and Parks Commission reappoint two members to the Beach and Parks Committee. They have, they are in good standing. They want to serve again, and that's what's being brought to you today. Deputy Mayor Depot.
Do you know if we have any openings on the Beach and Parks Committee?
Do you, do you know the answer off the top of your head?
Not for that one, not off the top of my head. I could go run and get it real quick.
I did. Okay.
Do you want me to do that?
No, no, we're good.
I just want to point out that, you know, the Beach and Parks Committee, like many of our committees, meets once a month. And if you're interested in serving in some way, it's a good way to start because, you know, it's a lower commitment than, say, this group that's here every week. And if you are interested in making, just helping to make decisions and give advice on what we do with Beach and Parks, feel free to attend and/or join that committee when there's openings. And I just want to encourage people and think these, these two members are being reappointed. They've been on the committee already. I know they're not here. I occasionally see them out in the committee, but, you know, I just want to, the people I talk to appreciate those who volunteer their time. And I know Beach and Parks has been kind of trying to ramp up things the last couple of years, add more events and stuff like that. So just want to express appreciation for them volunteering again for another term.
Okay.
Actually, can I, I, I do think that they possibly have an alternate available, but I do think all regular committee spots are taken. I do believe it is so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move both of these to mayor and council meeting of 121624.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, the last thing, group standing committees of the council, this is informing, is a discussion. So I'm going to come to you again about, to talk about dissolving the committees because the committees are not meeting, or if they are, the committees are not meeting, we currently don't have any actions with the exception of one out of Beach and Parks, and that's being handled with the Beach and Parks Committee, and that is the resolution, the ordinance on. uh, the resolution, the ordinance on the benches, right? And so that will come, once that's ready, then that'll come to a committee of the whole and go from there. And then, um, the, sometimes, uh, actions coming out of committee are not timely, so therefore, you know, my thing is, if we have something, instead of taking it to a committee and then it getting prolonged, we can just bring it straight to the committee of the whole and, uh, get it resolved. If we can't get it resolved in one committee meeting, we'll just carry it over to the next commit, to the next committee of the whole to do that. And what's driving this is the clerk needs to submit, uh, submit a schedule to the Secretary of State for meetings for next year. So I thought I would come to council again to talk about, uh, the committees. Again, this is council's decision. If council decides that you want to keep this, and I have another question to you, so so I'll open the floor for discussion from the council. Deputy Mayor Depot.
So, as probably everyone knows, I'm in favor of keeping the committees. I think that, I do think that it's good that we switch them to quarterly, I think that's useful. We can always call extra meetings if we want. So to me, it makes sense to keep them on a quarterly schedule. I do think that it might be useful to have, um, maybe a committee of the whole meeting at the beginning of the year where we can all, almost like how we did for ARPA, where we put in what we think goals maybe for committees should be, where even though I'm not on, say, economic development, where I can say something I'm interested in seeing economic development do this year, and maybe have those things compiled for the chairs of those committees to consider for the year. Um, I think maybe that would make them more productive, is to kind of have the rest of the council have a little bit of input, because I know sometimes our groups meet at the same time, and there's stuff in the other group that I would be interested in being a part of the discussion that I can't attend because my group is meeting at the same time. So maybe having a little more, um, like of a plan at the beginning of the year, um, might make them more productive, but I'm not in favor of eliminating them. I do think that when things arise, it is a good, um, less formal place for residents if they want to come. I think it's it's not a big commitment once a quarter to have an extra meeting. And, um, I think making ourselves available to residents is important, even though it's rare they show up to committee meetings. To me, I'm not in favor of eliminating more opportunities for residents to give feedback.
I I agree with you from a point of view, but from another point of view, we have, we currently have them scheduled now and we don't meet. So even if the residents wanted to come out, there's nothing on the agenda, the committees are not meeting now. That's why I'm saying just get rid of them, and if if there is a reason to meet, then you have a special meeting. That's easy to do, to have a special meeting, you could do that. But if it's the will of the council to keep the meeting, then I'm going to ask the council to populate the meeting so that we can start getting some work done with the committee. Now, every, I I don't have an issue with what you want to do in January, and we'll put this on, we'll put it on a committee of the whole to talk about goals for the groups, but every week, there's a section in the can, in the agenda that talks about committee referrals. And I don't remember the last time we had a committee referral, so. So, so it's been a while. Uh, but with that, I will, uh, it's the will of the council, but I'd like to get a consensus on whether you want to keep them or not keep them. I mean, it's up to you guys. And then, depending on what your decision is tonight, I will then go to my next comment about meetings. Meetings, good. Uh, Councilor Piazza.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so could you just do a brief, like Reader's Digest version of the history of how committees were developed? And how many, and how successful was it bringing action out of it or bringing it to committee of the holes? I mean, and has that just, we've just had a wave of depletion, was that due to COVID, or just a real quick synopsis of it?
Well, uh, so we've always done it that way, and that's not the right answer. So, you know, historically, we've had committees when I was a counselor. Counselor Sheffield and I were on a committee, I was finance, he was community development, and I think that's right, is that correct? And one of the things that we we had on there was the Mother Bailey House, and, uh, we were at the point where we brought it to Cal to talk about, Mother Bailey's going to ask for a hundred thousand dollars for Mother Bailey, and at that meeting, the mayor said, we had a problem with the Zabirsky House, and the Zabirsky House needed emergent renovation. And so that money was not take, not, uh, was not allocated to the Mother Bailey House, but instead was was put to, uh, the Zabirsky House, which I agreed with. And and so, but that was one of the things, but there's, there have been some things that were, I know when I was on finance, there were some things that were sent that we did, uh, but, uh, others, I I think in the last two, maybe three years of Mayor Galbraith's term, and then during my term, the committees, there's, there were things on there, one of the things that we did do was the ordinance review. So we had each of the committees look at the ordinance review, but that was at the end of Mayor Galbraith's term and the beginning of mine. I don't think a lot of other, I don't think a lot of other initiatives have come out of the committees. I mean, there used to be a saying, you want it, you want it to die, send it to committee. Send it to committee, it'll die, as opposed to if you bring it here, we get active discussion, deliberation and debate. But we could certainly manage that if we decide to to keep the committees. And then, you know, don't forget, uh, this council is in its last year. So if you do this, it's only going to be in effect for, uh, another ten months or so. And then when you, when the next mayor and council convenes and the next set of rules, you can do what you want. You know, that council can do what they want. So did that kind of answer your question?
Excellent. So, so basically, it seems like the same, but it's for community citizens' participation, are you saying it's basically the way, the same we didn't? Did you ever see a way where citizens weren't participating, or it's just never been?
No, Counselor Sheffield, do we have any, we never had anybody come to any of our meetings, right? Because you and Counselor Muncie and I were on committee for together for a long time.
We had people come when, uh, we were with, uh, former Councilor Ilvento. And, um, I remember the skateboard park that he wanted to develop here in the city, so we had people come out for that.
Well, that was, that was a meeting that Mayor, uh, Mayor Galbraith held as a large meeting where we had people in the auditorium.
No, that was, that was here, we had, we had a small meeting here.
I don't, I don't remember the people coming out, but maybe they did.
Yeah, it was young kids, yeah, the young kids wanted to have a skateboard park, and we invited some kids to to come to it, and, uh, that was a part of Parks and Rec.
Right.
And actually, Mary was here as well. So that was a discussion, uh, over, yeah, ten, over ten years ago regarding a state skateboard park, so.
We couldn't get through that, so.
No, that, you know, we did, we're meeting a consensus, but I'm saying that, um.
So my thought is, is like.
Rare that people come, I mean, we, you know, we have a lot of, all of our meetings are public, and we invite the, the, uh, the public to come out, and sometimes they're able to, and sometimes they're not. I mean, you know, people are busy, and I get that. Uh, sometimes it's a topic that they're not interested in, uh, so, you know, that's.
Well, I was just going to say, I think one of the best things, I think, since I've been in as a counselor is that when you had us narrow down our list and check, you know, what's on it, what really needs to be on it, what needs to be removed, so forth, that was a, that was, I think, good. But the main thing that's happening with community development is Art in the City, but one, you know, discussing with Sierra, and then Rashad was in it, and then Steve, and looking at the history of how that all had started and where it moved to, and then kind of waved down. I just, I would, some of the things that Sierra and I have talked about, I really would like to be involved, but also too, I feel like the point of contacts I've already had as far as to be, you know, I've already con, uh, been contacted by a curator, been contacted by artists, you know, so I'm like moving out and just, you know, to me in a way for me to be able to do that and then feed that to Sierra, and she's also going to be, uh, meeting with other, I don't want to say associations, that I'd like to be a part of that, and it kind of would, uh, assist her, I guess, in some way. But I think, you know, it seems like the history of it that I've looked at, that it was really important to people to have art in the city, I think it still is. So I still would like to see community develop, can, development continue, I do agree with Mayor, uh, Deputy Mayor Depot, Depot that we meet quarterly, but I think it would be good if we did have, like, goals, and then we can just, like, basically give a quick report on that, it's my goal, this is a, you know, short term, long term, and.
But, but those.
And those goals need to come from this body, they need to come from the council, not directed by the mayor, because if we're going to do that, I mean, I don't have an issue with it, I'm just, my only issue, my, my only comment is that I haven't seen it happen yet. And so if we're able to, if you guys are able to make it happen, then that's great. So anybody else have a comment?
I'd just like to say something real quick, is that the last couple of times when we went to meet is that nobody was here to meet, so it was just going to be myself, and I could have wrote a note, but I thought the, I thought the gist was.
You still have time of course.
That's what I'm saying, so there wasn't the other people here to meet, so, you know, we didn't have the meeting, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Norris.
So before, uh, I guess a decision is made to dissolve the committees or not, is the first gather some type of consensus on what their purpose is? Is it that they are committees to help staff formulate ideas, directions, policies, procedures, not actually do the work, but then take that information and bring it to council so we actually become, the workload of the entire council into a smaller group? And as I said, help with streamlining, lining, decision-making, public engagement, all that kind of stuff. But my first thing is, I I'm going to be factual here, I'm confused on what the purpose is. Because when we talk about goals, whose goals, is it a pet peeve that a council person wants? Well, why does that become a committee goal, that's a personal thing? Versus, for example, oh, and then I would also add, anything that goes to committee has to be cleared up in three months, six months, if you haven't finished, it gets automatically wiped off. So we're not talking about, well, this gold committee thing hanging out there for two or three years, because some of them on there are just have no end in sight.
And to that point, I think if you all remember the, when you were handed your agenda list, there were items on there from seventeen, eleven.
Yeah.
I mean, and then when you go ask, what, what does this mean? I don't know, let's take it off. So if if it's, if if we're going to do this, it needs to be actively managed, and that's where you as a council, have the committees. So, Counselor Norris, please.
I would even dare, um, at some close time, that do we consider putting a head hot committee together to come up with policies, procedures, purpose, goals of what those committees are? So it doesn't just reside in the mayor's office, because that's also a big task and an added burden, so that's just my.
We'll put it on the, we'll put it on the, uh, committee of the whole for for January. So, uh, Counselor Piazza.
Thank you. I, so in addition to that, um, it's not just as far as like, yeah, we don't want things to be personal. I've had a few people come to mine, and to some things when Rashad was there, actually, he was able to answer it because he knew the hi, the history better than I. So that's a big thing when you come on, is when I looked at a lot of these, is I had to search the history, go online, search the history, what was the purpose? And, you know, it takes time. But when we're talking about, I was wondering if we could do a survey like we've done many times, like Sierra has done, if we could do a survey out to the citizens, uh, talking about committees, and do they have any fresh ideas? Or any kind of idea, or geez, whatever happened to, uh, putting tablets out at Washington Park, is just an example, you know, blah, 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 and whatever happened to that? So there's answers to it, or if they say, hey, we'd really like blah, 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 if we could do a survey. My other, um, statement I want to say is that, um, I've already lost, oh, so Art in the City, that would be difficult for me, and who actually would be putting the, when you say three or six months, you know, I I think I'd have to refresh it because when, now that I've talked to Sierra and then looking at everything in the history, and then what she's got to do, amongst other things she's got to do, and then what I look at, and then talking to people, because when I first started talking to people, they were like, so when is this happening, when are we going to do it, what do you need to have done, they were like, ready, set, go. And now when I look at it, it's like, pull the way back, wait, wait, we got to pull the reins back. So three months would be really, as far as what I hear, the goal was, the type of art they wanted to put in the city is like really long-term goal, so.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is that you want to keep the committees. So the question, the reason we're here, no?
No, I'm all for dissolving them.
Okay.
I was going to say the same thing.
Okay. Let's, all right, so let's go around the room, you're a no, you're a yes.
Yes.
You're a yes, you're a no, Counselor Sheffield?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Norris?
Keep them.
So we have four, two, keep them? You know, my only request for council is that they actually, we actually do something with the committees. So that gets us to this next question, is do we want to stay with a quarterly that we have now? Or because if we have them, then we, you know, we need to have them, but, you know, we've canceled them in the past. But there's a, there's a, there's work involved in doing all that, getting all that put out and everything else. Or do we want to not have any public meeting, have anything published, and then we have special meetings? So there's two ways, if you're going to keep the committees, there's two ways to do the scheduling and the meeting of it. So I'll open the floor for that discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot.
I think that we should keep them quarterly. I think that, um, I think that if we do at committee of the whole meetings, maybe just one in January, or maybe one every six months or something, get feedback so from the rest of the council where we can have a discussion, like, say, okay, I'm not on community development, so where we can have a conversation, okay, has anyone had any, anything come for, I know that we can do referrals at mayor and council meetings, I know that's an agenda item, but I don't think that that's always, when we're at a mayor and council meeting, I don't think that that's always when we're thinking of something to refer to that committee. I think at a committee of the whole meeting, if we were to have, you know, an open item discussion of, does anyone have any input on any of the committees? Do you have questions about what's happened in the last however many months? Do you have, um, any input? Have you gotten feedback from any residents where it's more collaborative with the whole group? Because I think that's part of what's missing. Is that we're divided into two groups, and maybe that's an issue for another time, but, um, I do think that they can be useful. My other hesitancy to change them is that I don't like the idea of changing them just based on this body. Like you said, this council is only here for another year, so we're just going to change a rule this year, then the next council comes the next year, they're going to change a rule next year, like, it seems kind of silly to change the structure of the council based on who's sitting in these seats. I do think that it ebbs and flows with activity. I've had, when I first joined, I was on Public Works, and we had a bunch of stuff that we worked on when I was on the Public Works, um, committee. And it just ebbs and flows with what is happening at the moment right now. Public safety, I work, talked to the police chief a lot about public safety things. I, um, you know, for me personally, when I'm in the community, I tell people, I'm the chair of public safety, do you have any public safety questions? Do you have any issues with public safety? Do you have any feedback for me to bring back to the? back to the chief? To me, I don't see it just as a committee assignment for the committee meeting. Um, I see it also as just to keep an ear out for things for those departments, like you said, like a liaison to the staff potentially. And again, I think just like everything else, it ebbs and flows, so, you know, we might not have anything for finance for a while, but then when we're going through certain, um, public hearings for things, or tax increase, or whatever, that might be the person that people go, oh, you know, so-and-so's the chair of, of finance, they probably know about the tax rate, what's the tax rate going up, or whatever. I do think they can be valuable positions. Um, I just think it, one depends on who's in the seat, the makeup of the council, and I, I don't like the idea of changing the structure of it completely, or dissolving it just because of that. So, I, I think if we increased, I think, the collaborative effort, or had, uh, discussions at periodic committee of the holes, where everyone's kind of involved in it, um, I think that might encourage more, um, activity.
Okay. So, are you suggesting then that we have a placeholder so that every second Cal, we talk about the committees?
I, I was thinking like every six months. So, like, we, I, I like having, I like having the expectation that at the mayor and council meeting, if something has happened in your committee, you report it in communications and reports. That makes sense, you're the chair of your committee, communication, communications and reports is where you should communicate and report what happened in your committee. Um, just like the other events, like, oh, I went to the food box distribution, and I report back, you know, sim- similar, we attended this meeting, this is what happened in the meeting. And then I think if we give an opportunity every six months for counselors to, um, kind of give a summary and get feedback from the other counselors of, how do you feel about how this process went? Do you think we could, you know, do something different? Do you have any other questions for these items? You know, because in communications and reports, we don't do that. We're just reporting what happened in our committees.
But we could. Well, you can't do agenda items, you can't do things going to violate FOIA.
Right.
So, how about if, how about if we do it quarterly? Because your, your committee, so what I'm thinking is, the committee meets quarterly.
And then the following Cal.
And then the following Cal, we put as a placeholder, so it's four times a year.
I think that's good.
And then that way, you get everybody, and you get feedback, and you get more synergy from all the council members. Is that, could we, could we try that? Uh, sc- sorry, uh, Councilor Piazza?
I just wanted to see, like, so when we report, so we don't get off on a poopy, which I could do. So, it'd be like, if I say it in the Cal that I would say, oh, so I met community development, and one of the goals is buying ten pens, and so we figure out, there's a manufacturer, blah, blah, and it's been a long process, blah, blah, and this is, something really short. Is that what we're looking for?
Right. So, so weekly, so at the mayor and council meeting, the, you know, where we talk about committees, then it is strictly a report, right? There's no interaction between the council because we don't want to violate FOIA.
Right.
Right? But now that it's going to be on the agenda, then you can have discussion, deliberation, debate, exchange of ideas, and, you know, everybody gets involved, and we may, there may be synergy that can help move, uh, move initiatives forward in the city that people, that all the council would benefit from, not just, I see, the, the one committee.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I, I...
Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Well, just to use your example, I, I think it gives, like I said, like, I can't attend the other group meetings if I'm in my meeting, so like, if you were saying, oh, we're going to buy these pens, it would give the rest of us the opportunity to go, oh, okay, what color pens are you, like, where'd you come up with the design? Like, it gives the opportunity for the discussion in our public meeting, if we had questions or ideas that we couldn't give because we weren't able to attend the other meetings.
Or, there's always people of expertise.
Yep.
You know, or the no, you're not.
Okay. All right. So, for us, we're going to go quarterly with the, so we'll continue quarterly with the committee meetings, group committee meetings, and then, uh...
The second Cal following?
The, the second Cal of that month, because this is, it's the second mayor, it's the second Monday of the first month of the quarter is when we meet.
So, in January, there is one?
All right. So, and then at the, the, the second committee of the whole of that month, then that's when the synergy will take place. Is that something that the council can, can, at this point, come to an agreement on? I mean, we can always, I mean, we can always change, this is all fluid, right? Going back to your point about you don't want to change everything, these are your, these are your rules, this is in our, this section of the rules, this is for this, these rules are for this council. So, you can change them if you wanted to change them. Uh, so, but, and, and you'll get a chance to, you know, whatever we, whatever happens next, next. So, are we good with moving forward with this, in this direction? Councilor Sheffield?
As long as there's a commitment to it, because we were, this was discussed over a year ago to go quarterly, and it just didn't happen. I mean, we started having other meetings, and, and I kind of figured I knew it was going to happen, and it just fizzled away. Once we got off a monthly, and then decided to go quarterly, and then from there, we just stopped meeting.
So, why didn't, so why didn't it happen?
Well...
Because when we had, so when we had monthly meetings, the reason I went to quarterly is because we weren't meeting monthly.
Well, that's...
And so, I made a recommendation to go to quarterly, to try out the quarterly, it, it's, it's up to the, the committees to, so they're on a schedule. If the committees decide to meet, they decide to meet. If they don't decide to meet, then they don't decide to meet, but that's up to the committees.
Well, I'm not sure if it was on the schedule. I mean, that was the plan, but nothing, to me, ever got implemented that it was going to be a strict quarterly thing going on, and we had other stuff happening, and then all of a sudden, we just never met after that.
We, we sent out, we sent out packets with, with agendas and everything else. So, that information was communicated to council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, the clerk sends out the packet quarterly with the group committee agendas, and we have received them. Um, I know that we, maybe there's some confusion with the timing because we schedule them, we put the schedule at the same time so that they can start as soon as the committee of the whole meeting ends, because you can start a meeting late, you can't start it early. So, uh, I believe that we agreed to that last year.
Right.
Having them set at six o'clock for the second Monday, which the Cal also starts at six o'clock, but that means that if our committee of the whole meeting is thirty minutes, then we can start our group meetings at six thirty, and do them right after the committee of the whole meetings, because if you set the group meetings for seven, if our committee of the whole meeting ends early, then you got to sit there for thirty minutes and twiddle your thumbs.
Right.
So, um, I've always received it in my packet quarterly from the clerk, and, um, whether or not the committee chairs hold their meetings is a different question, but the clerk has sent them out every quarter.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? All right, we're going, oh, sorry, Councilor Piazza?
Uh, so, would we have forms, since we're kind of going to move into, you know, when we're, when we're discussing about having goals? Will we have a form that makes us all consistent, and is like, this is my goal, this is the intervention, and this is the
Well, that's, that's got to come from council. Does that mean...
Well, we used to have forms, and then we...
Well, wait a minute, we, so the for, what, okay, hold on a minute. What form are you, you referencing? Is this the form for the minutes? Is that the form?
Correct.
Okay. So, we have a template for minutes, and you can either send them to her electronically, or you could scri- not scribble, you can write down your notes, and then she can transcribe them. Right? I know when I was, uh, on the council and I had a committee, I got, uh, the clerk at the time, Deb Patrick, to send me the Word document, and I did my own minutes, and sent them to her electronically, because it was a lot easier. Uh, but we also need to remember, we have FOIA requirements about posting and having the minutes in and those kind of things. So, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Is it possible to get, uh, right now, those, the, um, document with the minutes form is in Microsoft Word, and we cannot open on these?
Okay. We can, I can build you a, uh, we can get a fillable PDF.
Okay.
Take, take it down. The reason I say is because Jackie's done it for me with a couple of other things, where she's able to convert the Word to the PDF and then do a fillable PDF. So, we could do that for the council, and it'll make it easier. Any other questions or comments regarding this? Okay, we'll move on. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion as a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, council, for coming out. Got a lot done tonight.